Good evening. Good evening, welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, February 10th, 2015. I'd like to welcome everybody and invite everybody to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I will call the meeting to order at 7:31 PM and request a roll call, please. Mrs. Congdon?
Present.
Mr. Lebo?
Present.
Dr. Page?
Present.
Mrs. Donovan?
Present.
Mrs. Quinney?
Present.
Ms. DeBramson?
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Present.
All present? Thank you. Agenda item number three is public input. Is there anybody from the public who would like to address the school committee this evening? Seeing none, we'll move right into agenda item number four, approval of the consent agenda. There were items on the consent agenda included meeting minutes of the regular school committee meeting of February 3rd. However, those are not, they were not ready until today, so the members have not had a chance to review them, so we will not be doing that. So, the items that remain on the consent agenda are policy second readings of policy BEE, special procedures for hearings, policy BGD, school committee review of procedures, and policy BK, school committee memberships. The other item on the consent agenda is the third reading and adoption of policy BEDH, public communication with the school committee, formerly known as public participation at school committee meetings. Does any member wish to remove any of the remaining items from the agenda? Seeing none, if there's no objection, one last time, those items will be adopted. Thank you. Agenda item number, I ran out of my numbers, five. Chair announcements, just very briefly. I had mentioned a while back that there was a Foundation Budget Review Commission public hearing that was to be held, and the date was changed due to snow, surprise, surprise. The new date for this hearing, which will take place at the Florence Sawyer Elementary School in Bolton, is February 28th at 11:00 AM. This is an opportunity for municipalities and school districts to discuss or give testimony relative to the Foundation Budget, to the Foundation Budget Review Commission. So, if anybody's interested, that information is available online. Next, we have agenda item number six, presentations. This evening, we do want to acknowledge that there were two students who received John and Abigail Adams Scholar, do you have that? You do have? I do have. There were two students who, two additional students who received John and Abigail Adams scholarships this year. We were just notified of that, so we had a presentation a couple of months back. These students, we just had received notification that they are scholarship recipients. And what we will do is we will invite them to a future meeting and see if they would want to come and receive their certificates publicly. So, we'll make that known. So, our next item of business would be a presentation by Ms. Culligan, Colleen Culligan, our Director of Pupil Personnel Services. She has a PowerPoint presentation for us this evening. Welcome, Ms. Culligan.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. This evening, I'm going to give a brief overview of the work that's being done, in particular, a lot of the activities that have been going on in the last couple of years in the Department of Pupil Personnel Services and Special Education. I have given you a binder to take a look at. It's not exhaustive by any means, it wasn't meant to exhaust you either, but it does give you some sort of sampling representations of many of the activities that we're involved in in the pupil personnel services. If you have any questions about those in particular, be happy to answer them, but I'll just go over a brief overview with the PowerPoint at this time. Thank you. So, our presentation overview, we're going to talk a little bit about our program philosophy, look at some of our disability data, look at some of the goals that we've attained since I've been with Southbridge Public Schools, some of our next steps, some of our avoid and strategies to avoid costs in the Special Education Department by improving our programming, some of our funding sources, our professional development efforts. I'm not going to talk about staffing recommendations because we're going to enter into a budget cycle, so I wasn't really prepared to do that right now to this evening. And then, a very important piece of what we're working on, which is our next coordinated program review, which will start with the self-assessment this year and go into the full coordinated program review in 2015-16 school year. Basically, we are very interested in keeping our students in Southbridge. This is very important for us because we have a number of different programs that we think work very well and provide the needs and the supports that our students require in Southbridge. We've developed programs, and we also have programs that were already in existence. Some of those programs include a number of the ones that are listed here, social, emotional, autism spectrum. We've added a new medically fragile program. I'm going to give you some examples of some of that in a moment. We also want to provide a continuity of services in the programs that we already have. It's very important that we support them, that they are well-resourced, that they are enhanced, that they have excellent curriculum, that they are meeting the needs of the students with the IEPs in those programs, so there's always ongoing oversight and accountability for those. And we also want to look at implementations for professional development. We have a special education action plan this year, which has just been developed and approved by Department of Education to improve our achievement gap for our students with disabilities. We also need to continue to support all of the service providers who work with our special education students, and they are many. We have behavior specialists, psychologists, related service providers. So, we have a broad spectrum of activities that we perform in the pupil personnel office. This is some of our disability data. This is 2013 and 14, and this is 2014 and 15. If you had a look at this, you might see a couple of trends that stand out. One is in our communication eligibility category. It is high compared to the state average. You can see that there are some others that may be concerned that we don't really have disproportionate numbers. Our ED categories are very good, our emotional disturbance. Our intellectual impairment is a little high, and our, I'm sorry, specific learning disabilities is lower than the state average. So, it's interesting to kind of look at some of this and see what compared to some of the Massachusetts State Disability categories, where Southbridge falls. And it's important to note this because one of the things that we have done over the last two years is do a lot of training in eligibility determination. What fits in an eligibility? What is the process? What do we end up, how do we end up classifying a student with a disability? And how do we pick the categories, which are all obviously federal and state? So, we work very hard at making sure they're accurate, that we're actually compartmentalizing the children in the proper eligibility categories if indeed they are found eligible for special education. And it's important that we watch the incidence of this so that we don't go over or beyond what we should proportionate to the population of students that we have. Just a nice accountability piece for us to take a look at. A couple of features in this eligibility category data, I was able to get SIMS data from 2011 to 2014. Again, I started in, very late in 2012. In particular, you can see our numbers of students on eligibility at the bottom, 456, 418, 425, and up again to 443. Our out-of-district students, we worked very hard at bringing a number of those back. They have gone down considerably from what started in 2011 at 57. We've been able to bring them down to 36 by careful programming and also just watching our referral process more closely. But, the bottom piece, I think I'd like to call your attention to the fact that we have a total of 57 counted IEPs that came in from other districts, new enrollments this year, which is really elevating the number of special education students on IEPs in our district. Not entirely sure why that's happening. Those are not students that we're finding eligible that are coming from other places. So, we have to bear that in mind when we're looking at funding sources and looking at our service delivery ratios for the budget year coming up. We've attained many program goals. We've done a lot of good work around assessment. We've done a lot of good work in developing some new programs. Our work experience program is going very well. We have our special education teachers, more importantly, really involved in the data cycle. This was very important at the building level with focus on results. They are part of the instructional leadership team, they are part of the planning, they are part of the feedback that we're getting with respect to our achievement. So, that's a wonderful thing. We have grade-level meetings now where special education teachers are actually participating in that so that they can be invested in, bought into the data cycle, do their reteaching plans as the general education teachers do, and get more subgroup information and data on the achievement of the special education students. We've looked at all our assessment and evaluation tools, those were in your binder. We continue to work on developing our professional development. There was a sample of that in your binder as well. We had the SEA contract for the educational assistance, had the honor of working with the school committee and the SEA on that this last year. We've developed tiers and roles and responsibilities for educational assistance. We do need to now start working on more training and professional development. We continue to evaluate all of our programs. We have developed a special education process manual, which is part of our coordinated program review requirement. Gives all the laws and all the procedures and everything you have to do in Southbridge if you have a student with a disability to provide them with appropriate services. And I want to thank the school committee for helping me to hire a special education legal counsel on our high-profile cases. It's been invaluable. I have found her to be very capable. She is very well-versed in sped law. She helps with both high-profile disputed cases for IEPs, but also for five or four accommodation plans as well. Those have been very successful. Our outcomes have been successful, and she's been a huge help, so I appreciate that. Thank you. So, we are working very hard and trying to control special education costs by developing some of our own programs, doing trainings for our professional staff, trying to reallocate efficiently all our educational assistance in all the schools, looking at all our service delivery and caseloads. We've been doing analysis three times a year. We're certainly going to be reflecting some of those new IEPs that have come in so that when we allocate teachers to buildings to service children, we have those allocations as equitable, and they're proportionate, and they have the caseloads that they can manage within the school setting. We've worked with some grants, writing some grants to get a little bit more help there. We've reassigned our speech and language pathologist. That was a big assignment or a big task when we first got started together, working together, because we also needed to look at our exit and entrance criteria for all of our service providers. We had a lot of students that were getting services that either might not need them and should have been brought off of services, or that needed services and were not getting them, so we did a lot of work in that area. These are samples for the programming that we have in place. We do have other programs. We do have SOAR programs at the middle school and high school, but when you're looking at cost defrayment, this is just an example of some of the money that can be saved when we enhance, spend resources, and hire people to develop programs within the public schools. So, we have a work experience program. This is our 18 to 22 transition population. We have now an elementary behavior classroom, which we did not have, which was started last year and is kind of in its second year of inception, but we're still working on it. We have presently eight students there that would have gone to out-of-district placements, no question in my mind. Nice self-contained classroom, thank you, Mr. Reagan, West Street School. We have some lovely space and a wonderful principal who supports the program and supports the students in that program, and that has been a huge help. We have our past classrooms. We have one at Eastford Road. We have one at Charlton Street School. Our young ones start at Eastford Road and then move up to Charlton Street School. We continue to have a pretty significant number of students with autism spectrum disorder that qualify for this program. But, we also have students that leave this program to go into inclusion, and so we've been very successful at kind of providing what I would call sort of a flexible flow of students in and out. If they can do well in inclusion, we keep them there. If not, we can pull them back to the self-contained setting. That's going very well. Thank you, Mary Scrippsack, for the Eastford Road work that we have done this year. And we also started the new developmental program. This was an important program because we had a number of students that were in the SWECC collaborative. And when we took a look at those students, we found they were in a self-contained classroom in a regular educational setting in a school, just like we have, with multiple therapies, but they had a designated nurse, and we went and took a look at one in another district with all of our related service providers and our school nurse, and we thought, hey, you know, we can do this. And we did, and we put it together. This is the first year. We have an excellent teacher in there. But, these are students that are medically fragile, and they might be nonverbal. They might have very low skills with respect to their capacity to speak and do academic work, but they have many skills that can help them to make progress in the curriculum. And we've added curriculum. We have augmentative communication in these classrooms so they can signal, so they can speak non, they can work with us and communicate nonverbally. We've done some training in augmentative communication this year, and this is a program where we had such success that we did have a student tuition in from North Brookfield. They did not have a program there. He, his parent moved. He, she loved our program so much, wanted to stay, and North Brookfield was willing to pay us tuition to keep him there, and our numbers were low enough to be able to do so. That was a, that was a wonderful thing. In terms of our out-of-district students, bringing students back to Southbridge is in the best interest of all of our students and their families. They're not isolated in out-of-district placements with students that might, behaviors that might be worse than theirs, or that might have significantly more or greater impairments than our students. When we bring them back to district, it is a very thoughtful process. We do it with transition plans. We make sure that we have the proper support. It sometimes takes almost a year to two years to transition a student back into district because of the kind of planning and the parental support and getting supports in place to do so. So, in the last two years, we've brought back 13 students. We do have students age out or move out, but these were students that we particularly targeted as being appropriate for our in-district programs and brought them back as a result of that to both enhance their community engagement and be a part of our Southbridge community, but also as a cost defrayment for the district. We have professional development. I gave you a sample of one of our professional development agendas in your binder. You can see that sometimes we have upwards of 10 or 12 subgroups meeting together to do professional developments. They're job-alike groups. We're excited to do those. Special education teachers got together recently for the first time in many, many years and attended a professional development together to do a needs assessment, which is part of the action plan for the students with disabilities, action plan for the state. First thing that we needed to do was step back and talk to the teachers and find out what they thought they needed, what were the good things that were happening in the district that they could identify, what was working, and what we needed to do better, and what some of our challenges were. And from that, we will be developing an actual professional development plan, a short-term plan and a long-term plan for the special education department, the pupil personnel department, and also it will eventually involve our general education teachers too because they're so important for helping co-plan, co-teach, and work together with special education teachers for all of our students. We've got A&amp;V training. Thank you, Mr. Kukase, our district trainer, who's also in the audience here today. We started with 25 trained staff last year. We have added administrators this year, an additional adjunct staff, new staff who came on. A&amp;V is applied nonviolence. It's physical management, but it's also verbal de-escalation for anybody working with students that have any kind of behavioral outbursts and/or require physical response and/or require even verbal support because they're upset or having behavioral issues or just in general struggling. It's an excellent class. We continue to add folks every single year to expand the number of people who are A&amp;V trained in the building. Our IEP compliance at the, in particular, the middle school, high school, still continues to be difficult. It still continues to be a problem. It is the area where, it is the location where we had the most out-of-compliance when I arrived. It was approximately 75% out-of-compliance with all the indicators. You can see that we've made great strides. We are not at 100% yet. And I do have to attribute this to, there were, I have to say, so many areas that were out-of-compliance, and there were years of practices that had not been really looked at. There was very little accountability and leadership in that area. We've done a lot of training, but more importantly, we have a high volume of students up there that had three or four years of evaluation and assessment that were not completed. So, we have to maintain the number of IEPs that we have going. We have to keep those going. We have to stay in timelines, but we also have to go back and fix all the ones that were out-of-compliance, so it's almost double duty. That being said, I understand that the middle school and the high school team chair positions were consolidated when we went to the middle school, high school to one building, and I do believe I'm going to be putting in a budget request for another team chair up there. The volume and the compliance issues are so great that if we want to be able to maintain compliance and continue to be able to attend to the parents and the students that are up there, I do believe we need to split that into two positions again. Right now, my supervisor of special education, Elizabeth Scanlon, has been up there since December. We have a wonderful person up there who's very capable and competent, our team chair, Julianne Nair. She's doing a great job, but we need some support. We're probably going to take us through the rest of this year before we have full compliance up there, but we're getting close. Rejected IEPs reflects a good trend. If you have fewer rejected IEPs, that means we've done a good job at the team process, explaining things, supporting the parents, helping them to understand what we're doing, why we're doing it. This year, we're giving surveys out to all the parents so we should have some ideas of where our areas of concern are after all the IEP meetings were impossible. So, that's good news. The fewer rejected IEPs, the fewer chance that we have to have some kind of dispute that we have to continue through a prolonged process with the Bureau of Special Education Our coordinated program review is coming up. This is going to be a huge task. I came in at the mid-cycle. These are all three, these are done every three years, so this is the big one, and this will cover many of the, many of the things that the mid-cycle did. You'll see all of the indicators in your binder of all the things that they look at. As I explained the first time I presented about the mid-cycle, they interview parents, teachers, they look at our files, they talk to our students, they talk to our team chairs, they look at all our trainings, and they determine from that where our areas of compliance or noncompliance might be. The state has done a good job this year of adding a self-assessment. We're doing that this year so that this, these next five months, I have to put a lot of focus on that to make sure that we are doing a proper self-assessment, which will reflect to the state where we're at, and then they actually come in and do onsite after So, that's the overview. Thank you very much, Ms. Culligan. You're welcome. Does anybody have questions for Ms. Culligan? Questions? Really? No questions? Do you have any questions? Okay. Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Culligan, for coming tonight. This was very helpful. My first question was relative to the pie charts that you had, and then in conjunction with the graph that was the Massachusetts State Disability Incidence Report. It was earlier on.
Slides four, five, and six.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. So, the communication piece, I didn't know, like, what's the definition of this, that? Where it's so big?
Well, a communication impairment can be anything from an articulation problem, speech that it's hard to articulate and produce sounds articulately.
Okay.
Or it can also be an expressive language delay or receptive language delay. We can't express ourselves properly. We might have an impairment in that area, or we can't find, we might have, for example, we can think of a word, but we can't retrieve it. We can't come up in our mind with the vocabulary word that it is that we're trying to say. So, that's what communication is supposed to be. And so, I think, I think this percentage is high because in the past, we have missed, we have categorized students with specific learning disabilities in this particular area because there's been a misperception or misconception that communication also includes difficulties with maybe reading and being able to develop your vocabulary, you know, adequately. This has been a statewide problem. When they changed the criteria for specific learning disability, it got very hard to categorize students in that. People tend to put more kids and students into the communication disability category. So, we actually attended a statewide training because even though it looks low at the state, many districts have been struggling with too-high communication category. So, that's generally speaking. I'm sure I've, I've.
No, that's, no, that's absolutely fine. Nope, no, that's fine. I didn't know if it was specific nonverbal, but you've answered it, that it's not specifically that category.
No.
While we do have some nonverbal students.
That's correct.
It's not specifically that, that many that make up that piece of the pie.
Yes.
And then, your next slide that had the Mass State Disability Incident, is that what it is statewide, or is that our school district?
This is statewide.
This is statewide.
This is statewide.
So, they have, what jumped out at me was their increase in autism.
Yes.
And I think it looked like our stats showed we had an increase in autism as well, and I just wanted to confirm that.
We've had fairly steady.
Okay.
I have to say, we're getting an influx at this time, and it's coming from the Worcester area.
Yeah, it's a trend, a sad trend.
It is a trend because also Worcester has absorbed a number of students from other areas as well with some, in particular, there was a school closing that we know about, and so we have started getting incoming students from the Worcester catchment area. Yes.
And then, you had mentioned, like, we have the PASS program.
Yes.
Both Charlton Street and West Street for these students. I'm not sure, what happens when they leave that grade level and enter a middle school, high school setting? Do we have a similar PASS program at the middle high school as well?
Yes, we do. We have one at the middle school. We work very hard at getting the student to a level of academic possibility that they can begin to go out into inclusion. And there's a lot of theoretical research about how best to do that for autism spectrum students. It has changed considerably over the years. So, by the time they get to middle school, we're doing what is called very little discreet trial and a lot more teaching, reading. We have curriculum programs for that. EdMark is one. We brought that in. We brought in SRA, and a lot less of the applied behavioral analysis, a lot more inclusion. And then, at the high school level, some of those students can end up being fully included, or they may end up in the life skills program that we have at the high school.
Okay. Okay. Those 57 new IEPs that we have, I mean, that's mandated upon us to fulfill those.
Yes, it is.
And we need to be aware that if there's certain requirements that our resources currently do not provide, we will have to do that regardless.
And I would say a substantial number of those came into the middle school, high school. I think at least half. I don't have the number, but a good half of those are, the elementary schools are seeing it as well, but a good number came into the middle school, high school this year.
Okay. Relative to the coordinated program review or CPR, it sounds like you're going to need CPR by the time that's done. My question was, when will the actual onsite visits take place? Is it during this school year, sometime between like March and June, or is the self-assessment this school year and then the onsites follow next school year?
That's correct. Exactly. Just the latter. We do the self-assessment this year. We have to have everything entered. There's a new web-based monitoring system that we had to go get training for because it's a little elaborate, but we did that. Our department has done that. And then, we identified the students that we want to do our self-assessment. There's a formula for that. We do all that this year, and we honestly report to the state where our areas of concern are. They ask for that. There's no reason not to because they also help us to facilitate making it better and help give us, you know, direction if we need it in that area. So, and there are a number of indicators, I mean, there's over 50 indicators that we will be reviewed on, and that was what was in the mid-cycle as well.
Yeah, okay.
And the onsite visits, excuse me, they will start next year.
Okay, that's what I wasn't sure about.
Yes, yes, yes.
This year's strictly self-assessed.
15-16 is when it's all getting done along with everybody else's evaluations.
And then, question, one last question and a comment. And then question, one last question and a comment. The guidance departments as well as the nurses, are they still part of the pupil personnel services umbrella?
They are. They are. They're slightly more autonomous in that they are more building-based and they have more, at least with respect to the guidance, there's more disparity in the roles between the elementary and the secondary level. At the secondary level, having a good, strong building administration that can work with them and help with some of the things that are required for guidance to do, there's so much that's done at the building level with career planning, career assessment, meeting with the students. So that's been working out very well with some building-based support.
Okay.
At the elementary level, I would say I'm, I'm much more involved because they are sort of standing in the role of counselors and adjustment counselors, which is more of a traditional pupil personnel area. The nurses are working very well autonomously. They developed the draft of the new manual, which is at the back of your binder. That had not been updated for many years. I think it was eight or nine years. They did that in their professional development last year. But I do provide them with opportunities for professional development, and then they take that and they develop professional development of their own from that. This year, we're working on updating all our policies with the Department of Public Health.
Okay, great. And you took that, my comment away. I did know that the nurses, it had been a long time since we had an updated procedure, manual. And I do know that they had put a lot of work into that.
They did.
Health protocol and procedures. I wanted to thank them for that and recognize them for that.
Thank you.
And as well to you for, I know the biggest thing that when you came on, you know, into the district was the compliance or the non-compliance issues. And just to see that shift in the bar graph tonight is a huge credit to you and to all the people who, you know, work under your guidance. I wanted to thank you for that and congratulate you. I think that's a huge success, just looking at just that one particular snapshot. So I wanted to thank you for that.
Well, if I may say, we have some wonderful, very dedicated staff. We have wonderful, dedicated teachers. In our needs assessment, some of the things that they identified is that they love working in Southbridge, that they feel that they have a strong commitment to the students and the work that they're doing here. We have an excellent professional staff of specialists as well. They're working very, very hard. There's no way I could have done any of this by myself, but what they have done is they've come together and they're working very hard on trying to make processes better, communication better, collaboration better. They understand that we still have a long ways to go. And I think that there has been a lot of work that they feel can be done and still needs to be done. But I'm feeling this recently with the action plan and the DESI sort of small move in a positive direction, that they're starting to feel it too, and we're hoping that we can capture some of that momentum and continue it because we do have many people who would like to move the district and help move the district forward.
Wonderful news. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Culligan. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm all set.
Thank you. Dr. Page?
One, one quick question. I kind of just did a rough sort of addition of the numbers of cost savings, and it comes up to about a million and a half that have been saved due to some of these initiatives and so forth. Could you give me an idea of what kind of, how that savings fits into our either previous budgets or current budgets? Because the way that was sort of presented was all fiscal year of 2014, 15, as in all this year.
Correct.
So.
So last year, we spent a lot of time developing the programs. There were a few programs that were already here. Remember that the way it works, and Erin can help me with the formula, is that for students that are out of district, we have a foundation level that we are required as a district to pay for. And that's around the $40,000 mark and give or take some little bit of change, which I'm not going to quibble over. Thank you, Mr. Osborne, for not doing so either. Over foundation, we have the support of the state for various things. We can't pay for transportation with Circuit Breaker, but Circuit Breaker comes in at that point and we have to give a report every year, which is audited for all of our students who cost us over $40,000 a year. So where we experience, I would say theoretically, the most cost savings is for our students who are already under $40,000 a year because we're not getting Circuit Breaker reimbursement, but might require more specialized support, which we can provide through the specialized programs and with our own staff. And the level of intensity doesn't require something that would require out of district. So we save money on students that we're bringing back under foundation because we're developing programs that we can, we can, you know, actually support them in-house. So a lot of that $1.5 million is, is students that we have either kept in district or brought back because we were able to do the therapies. Now, that's not to say that some of those students will not qualify for Circuit Breaker. Some of them will. When you add the cost of the therapies and the work that's being done, in particular in the developmental classroom and medically fragile students, some of those students may go over foundation. So what happens is the state every year sets a percentage. Last year, we got 75% of Circuit Breaker reimbursed. So we might have $2.5 million. They'll give us 70 over foundation. They'll give us 75% of that. You know, it's just a sample. I'm just, last year, we got over, I think it was a little over half a million dollars in reimbursement for those students. So it's a way to offset some of the really, really significant costs and burdens for the district. I have to say that our special education lawyer and many superintendents just went to the State House. There's a lot of discussion about Circuit Breaker at this time. They're actually thinking about reducing it and/or eliminating it altogether. So there's a lot of concern about keeping Circuit Breaker in because either the pupil, per pupil cost will have to be raised so that we can support these very, very expensive kinds of placements or, you know, they're going to have to find another way to fund it because districts will be in bad shape if it's reduced. So I don't think it will be. We have some sequestration going on right now still, too. Our grants haven't been released because of that. So in addition to our district efforts, there's a lot of legislative efforts and lobbying that's being done by our Association for Special Education Administrators. So that's kind of a long answer, but Circuit Breaker helps us. There are students that we need to keep them out of district, and they are costly, and we do get some reimbursement for those. So we do target the students that we can probably do effective programming under the foundation budget and develop our own programming and defray a number of those costs.
Okay. I think, I'm not sure that that answers my question.
Wow.
Sorry. So basically, what I, my, I'm just looking at it very simplistically.
Okay.
So it looks to me like that these programs implemented this year are saving us a million and a half dollars out of our budget. Is that true or not true? Or am I, am I interpreting this wrong in terms of how I look at these cost savings?
Well, because it's, you don't have something.
Or these cost avoidance?
It's not, yeah, it's cost avoidance. Exactly. It's not something, you don't have apples to apples. You have students that could potentially have gone out of district. That's how much it costs them if we send them out of district.
Okay.
You can see that there was a substantial reduction in out-of-district students from 50 to 36, including move-in and move-outs. When they move out or age out, we don't have to pay for them anymore. So for those 14 students, we've saved a substantial amount of money. Now, whether that comes actually down to, it's not, it does, it's not an equivalent to the total sum as you were talking about.
I see. Okay. That helps. That helps.
Is that better? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe even, you know, Erin.
I'm saying Erin. I'm saying Jill. Sorry. Did you have something to add, too? Okay, I'm sorry, Jill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Ms. Culligan.
I'm sorry.
My question is, what is this school district doing in regards to community outreach for the different programs?
So are you talking about, for example, with Harrington Hospital and partnerships with GB Wells and Center of Hope and those kinds of things?
All the above. What are we doing, what different organizations? Because we have so much in this community, such as the hospital, the Wells Center. How is the district partnering with these different organizations?
Well, in my role as pupil personnel services director, I really work hard to develop linkages for improved social, emotional, mental health concerns, also for our special education students with its after-school activities or vacation breaks, or I think you even raised the issue of Special Olympics. So we have partnered with, we have, there is a focus group of people that get together that include DMH, DCF, sometimes the District Attorney's Office, myself. And there's always a number of initiatives that are going on. And what we do is we bring those back to the community level. We have worked with Harrington Hospital. There is a new Director of Child and Family Services, Nicole Boucher. She's come in, presented with us. We work with UINC, Paul Carey. UINC is becoming more and more active in this area. We are hoping to use them more for the wraparound services, which are the tier-three interventions that we need to do students in crisis. GB Wells has always come into our schools, but I think that the relationship was a little tenuous and unsystematic, and we've been trying to really kind of build that back up. That's going very well. Center of Hope, I think I already mentioned them.
I did.
I hope. I can't remember now. We, our life skills and our web students go to their after-school programs. They have summer institutes and vacation weeks. We advertise those. We give our families resources for Center of Hope. So in terms of outreach with respect to social, emotional, learning, I think we've, we've come a long way. And we meet regularly. We meet regularly with them, and they have made presentations to our child study staff, our psychologists and, and adjustment counselors.
Thank you. I just wanted to touch on that, especially in regards to our AIP and community outreach, especially with the state last week. And we hadn't added any community portion of that. They, I think they were looking for that last week. So that's, that was one of my questions, just to see what we were doing. And hopefully, we can add that when they come back next week.
We need to do a better job of reporting some of the.
Next week. Hope not.
We did talk about, you know, doing a really good job of reporting many of the activities that we're doing. You're absolutely right.
Right. Thank you. That was it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mrs. Quinney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Ms. Culligan. Thank you for coming tonight. I had a couple of questions regarding eligibility determination for special ed services. You've talked about tiered intervention. Can you explain to the community kind of how that works?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, explain what?
So you talked about tiered intervention and then, can you explain to the community a little bit about that briefly?
Okay.
Summarizing quickly.
Sorry. I know that's always a challenge when I'm talking. Well, we have, at the school level, we have school-based support teams. And in reality, we don't have what I would call a strong tiered system of support for social, emotional learning yet. We do for academics. We need to build the one for social, emotional learning better. But at the school level, a student can be brought to the school-based support team with an academic or behavioral or an emotional concern. And the forms were in your binder so that a teacher, a parent, or anyone on staff can bring a concern forward. We like the schools to use the school-based support team process so that we can get some baseline data, determine if they're making progress. Look at their academics, look at their grades, look at all the things, all the considerations, maybe look at their discipline or their behavioral concerns. You know, do they have counseling in school? And really begin to focus on what the area of concern is. And we ask the teachers to go back whenever possible, and the staff, and put some interventions into place. That is the response to intervention model, where they actually might do something different. They might put the student in an intervention group, for example. Data might show that they might need a foundations group, a small group of reading intervention. And there's a number of those done at the school level. And if that doesn't work after a period of time, or if we're not making good, successful academic gains, the student is brought to the eligibility process. At the same time, concurrent with that, as you know, we have Childfind. So if we really feel that a student has a significant concern or a disability that we need to address, a student can bypass all of the SBST and come through Childfind to the eligibility process. Has to be significant. We do ask that it be significant enough, and we do ask that parents use as much as possible. We have wonderful, strong professionals at the building level. We have good staff that can look at whether a student is really accessing the curriculum, really making gains or not. And then we have to all decide what is enough gains and what is not, and do we really give more time, or is it too, too much time and we need to take action towards special education? So we work very hard on kind of parsing that out. This year, we have, I think, a good, strong school-based support team process.
Excellent. Thank you. I wanted to touch on, you have some numbers regarding how many students are in different classrooms. My question is, especially with a substantially separate classrooms.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
Do those students have the opportunity to be in inclusion classrooms?
So I don't have the student list for all of them. What we do in the self-contained classrooms is we start there as, the students that are there, typically that is the least restrictive environment for that student.
And how is that determined?
That is determined through special education law and the IEP and the assessment process. Once we determine that that's the proper placement for them, then we look at individualizing their academic and/or other kinds of supports. If we feel that a student, once they are either stabilized or they are getting what they need, can begin to go out to inclusion, we begin to do that. We have a lot of students that start out in the self-contained classrooms. We might have to have an educational assistant accompany them into the inclusion setting to help them with transitions or get through the classroom. We have a number of those. A lot of our educational assistants are assigned at the building level for students who are in those classrooms. But typically, those classrooms are self-contained to begin. We have two students. An example is, for example, the West Street School ESP classroom. We have two students who just almost joined. We have one that went into full inclusion and another one that has a new inclusion plan to go out into the mainstream environment. So we, we have two students. We work on that fairly closely with the team chair and the team. If they feel that a student is ready, then we begin to develop transition plans. It happens very, very quickly and easily with students that are very high-functioning.
I guess, given the value that you've stated, bringing students back into their community and having them have that opportunity, my concern is more that students that are, like, in the new developmental program, have access to inclusion and have those positive role models. And the same thing with students that are in the past classroom that may have negative behaviors, that they're then exposed to that within their community rather than in a substantially separate community.
Absolutely. And we do typically start with those classrooms with specials, art, music, because there's not quite as much disparity academically in, in those situations. They also participate in the life of the school. We've had our students in the reading initiatives that have gone on. We, they participate in assemblies. They participate with concerts. So as much as possible, we do that. We have to be very clear, though, that academic programming is very specialized and sometimes very focused and specific for some of those students. And it's very sometimes different from what they would get in the mainstream environment. So those, the academic programming has to be very carefully analyzed to be sure that if they do go out into the regular education setting, they're not going to substantially regress.
And the last question I had, you said within communication, articulation is one of the key pieces to that, receptive and expressive. And then articulation is another level of that. So a child that has an articulation issue, stuttering, a lisp, those sorts of things, those would be the students that would fall under that communication area.
Some of them do. Some of them don't require an actual IEP, but the ones that have very, you know, significant impairment such that it's difficult, the intelligibility is sometimes a piece that we have to make that distinction for, and/or how much direct service is going to help the issue as well. So we have our speech and language pathologists. We have very good criteria for what that looks like, articulation in particular.
All right. Now I'm more confused. If a child has an articulation issue, their intelligibility is low, you use how direct service would impact them to determine if they get services?
No. No, we look at the need and then we look at the direct service.
Okay.
Requirement as a result of the need.
All right.
But they, they have a lot of experience with this. I mean, I'm, I'm not a speech and language pathologist.
No, no, no.
So I probably didn't frame it properly. But they have a lot of experience with knowing what, you know, what level of criteria and/or intensity is required for direct service to be warranted, is probably a better way to say that.
Yes. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
That is all. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just have a couple. Hopefully, they're quick. So as I'm looking at the eligibility category chart on page seven, is this data for just IEP or is this data for IEP and 504?
Just IEP.
Just IEP. Okay. So what if a student has multiple issues? Is there, is there a category that takes precedence so they'd be classified? Or, in other words, is, are we talking that 443 unique students, or is it possible that there's one student that's in there that's classified twice? one student that's in there that's classified twice?
Well, we have, we can have a primary and a secondary disability, but this is primary disabilities. We do have a multiple disability category.
All right. Of the students that have come into the district, the 57 new IEP enrollments, Dr. D'Amico used to talk about this a lot, that generally, if they, if those students come into the district by a certain point in the year, we should be able to go back and recoup some special education class from the district, in theory, because that district, the sending district, has already budgeted for that student and that need, where we have not, if they're coming into the district. And I, you know, don't quote me on this, but I believe there was, she used to talk about maybe if they came into the district before, like, a March date, sticks in my head. I could be completely wrong. Is that something that we pursue?
Well, you might be talking about the move-in law. There is a move-in law where if districts have not budgeted for a particular student, but the move-in law is only usable for students who come from what is called a private Chapter 766 school. So, a student moving in, for example, with a collaborative IEP, they go to Grow, they move from Dudley Charlton to Southbridge, we are immediately fiscally responsible under the law. A student with an IEP enrolling in any of our schools, even specialized placements, self-contained classrooms, immediately fiscally responsible under the law. The only protection we have is for private school placements coming in, because they tend to be more expensive. But you're right, I mean, when you look at the significant proportion of students coming in, one would think that, in their wisdom, the legislature would help us with that. But every district, we, you know, we meet regularly as sped directors and we kind of compare. There's quite a bit of move, moving around. We have several small, little towns in this area. Webster and I, and we share quite a bit, quite a number of students, and we also do with Holland and with Dudley Charlton.
So, maybe this is something for the Foundation Budget Review Commission, right? We could provide some testimony on that.
More lobbying.
Well, we have some ears, right?
But it's important to know, the move-in law does not apply for any of these sort of so-called, you know, IEPs.
All right, just thought we'd check.
But thank you, yes. I wish we could.
That's it. Is there anything else? Superintendent, did you want to say anything relative to that, or just?
No, I wanted to reiterate what Ms. Culligan shared, which is the dedication of our special education staff, including teachers and service providers. And I would like to congratulate her on one of the first steps that she took in making sure that we're in compliance and pursuing that. That's a systemic issue that we need to address, and I would like to applaud her efforts at creating the action plan and taking a bit of a breather and step back to have a needs assessment created by staff, the teachers, so that we could put together a strong plan to move forward. And I think our goals now include professional development for staff, both gen ed staff and special education students, teachers as well. So, thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Also, your binder raised the bar.
Yeah.
I feel like everything you ever needed to know. Thank you very much for that. Next, we move on to reports. So, report of the representative of the Student Advisory Committee. Mr. Boisvert, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Sunday, February 1st, the National Honor Society and ASPIDA volunteered their services at the Southbridge Community Center at the Cartoon Character Breakfast sponsored by the Southbridge Alliance Club. Students had a great time serving food, serving coffee, and bussing tables at the event. This is an annual commitment that both the National Honor Society and ASPIDA make, and one that both are happy to continue doing. The National Honor Society currently holds peer tutoring on Tuesdays and Thursdays after school for any middle or high school student. Although show-up rates are not that high, we're hoping students will begin to take advantage of this free service. The National Honor Society is looking forward to its spring fundraisers, its third annual spaghetti shebang to take place in April, and its second annual spring car wash to take place in May. We hope for your continued support in our fundraising and community service efforts. On February 7th, there was a throwback. All basketball teams played Tantascua. There was a ceremony held for Jamie Ortiz at the games. This event was very well-attended. On March 6th, there will be a talent show at the middle high school. Drama Club's production of Beauty and the Beast's date is to be determined because of all the weather. The MCAS bio-makeups are going to continue through this week. And Thursday morning, the student of the quarter breakfast will be held at the school. Families of the students who are the students of the quarter may attend. One student from each department and middle school team was chosen. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Move on now to school committee reports, a report of the Curriculum Subcommittee. Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My report is as follows. The Curriculum Subcommittee met on Wednesday, January 21st. Present were myself and subcommittee members Dr. Page and Mr. Abrahamson. Others in attendance included Ms. Jill Congdon, our community member, and also our alternate, Ms. Cheryl Stanton, acting superintendent, and Ms. Julie Fields, our data technology manager. We approved our minutes from our November 19th subcommittee meeting. Next, we discussed our educational software licenses and contracts that are currently being used in the district. And Ms. Fields provided us with a detailed spreadsheet of what we are currently using, how much it costs, what the license actually, with the duration of the license, who oversees the contract, et cetera. So, we looked at that closely and really trying to, or the goal of the, many of the people within our district is to determine what is working and what is not working, what do things cost, as we're getting Reggie, ready for budget season again, to have a good grasp on things that need to stay versus things that need to go, and how we want to budget for the things that we recognize needs to stay. We also talked about a new type of program out there that will track attendance for teachers and substitutes, and also looking at some guidance software. There's an industry standard out there that our district currently does not have, and it's a big piece in the college application process. So, we talked about that as well. From there, we moved on to our curriculum map program and our cyclical review program. And Ms. Stanton provided us with information relative to a cyclical or curriculum review cycle for 2013 through 2017. We discussed what that cycle would look like. We also talked about the cost that's involved in that, and sometimes that can range up to $20,000 per subject. So, ultimately, the cycle itself for each curriculum subject would roughly take about two years, and then in another five years after that is when it would be up for review again. A lot of good information came out of that, and Mr. Abraham suggested that maybe at some point, that would be something that would be good to include on a school committee agenda for the rest of the school committee, as well as the public and other people within our school system, to really fully understand how that curriculum cycle works, and the review cycle that works with it. From there, we looked at teacher resource needs and our immediate and emerging needs, and again, textbooks came up, and we realized that there is a deficiency specifically with our science textbooks. So, this is something that we will be actively taking a look at as we come down to budget. Ms. Stanton will be meeting with the building principals, department chairs, academic deans, anybody, you know, that has an important role in that, and then will relay that information to the full school committee, so that we have a better understanding of what is needed, so that we can work to provide the resources for those needs. Our final discussion was relative to the future direction of this curriculum subcommittee. If you want to get really down to the nuts and bolts of what school committee does, curriculum is not one of our primary functions. It is something that we had taken upon ourselves to do, and it was more of an information or an inquiry type of subcommittee. We did get a lot of information, you know, received, a lot of things got done, but as far as us having the authority to implement initiatives or to vote specifically on specific actions, that is not in our purview. So, we talked about that a little bit. And then we also recognized that Ms. Stanton is no longer in her role as acting superintendent of teaching and learning, and now is, in fact, our superintendent. So, we felt as a committee that it was best that she could provide that same information that she would provide to a subcommittee to the full committee. And part of that would be either through a weekly report that she will submit to the school committee with a subsection of curriculum, so that all seven of us can be rightfully informed all at the same time relative to curriculum, and/or when she gives her bi-weekly report here on the dais curriculum and what is taking place in the curriculum department would be a part of that. So, rather than absolutely dissolving our committee, we chose to, actually, the motion was made by Mr. Abrahamson and seconded by Dr. Page, that we're going to suspend future meetings. However, we will be available at the request of administration, should the need come up that we need to discuss or review anything relative to curriculum. So, that being said, we had our final goodbyes and our meeting adjourned at 7:48 PM. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Quinney, negotiations? Do you have anything to report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The, not the negotiation subcommittee, the IBB team met with the Southbridge Educational Association on the 5th. We had a very productive meeting and are looking forward to our next meeting on the 26th. We have an upcoming negotiations with the SEIU on this Thursday, the 12th, weather permitting. And that is all.
Thank you. Do you have a report as a sped pack liaison?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a letter written by the board of the sped pack that I will read to you. Dear Mrs. Quinney and school committee members, for nearly three years, the sped pack has tried to encourage parent involvement with little to no success. We have tried to, we have also tried to raise funds with fundraisers to help the district and the special education classrooms, which were of minimal success, with only 18 parents out of approximately 180 parents helping. We did receive assistance last year from the Fraternal Order of Eagles Women's Auxiliary, and just recently was in, were in talks with a benefactor who is willing to donate $400, $500 this year and each year following. This benefactor contacted Ms. Pate in November, stating they would no longer be considering this donation to the district. Due to current turmoil, the current turmoil going on, as well as comments he read in a local blog. He stated that if a community could speak so hatefully towards parents and their children who did not ask to be born with a disability, using such words as spedophiles, spedies, and to make statements such as appropriate education would equal daycare for the three-to-22-year-olds who aren't potty-trained and already receive SSI and will do just that for the rest of their lives. This is not a community or a district he wanted to help, and he will look for another charity that can keep their house in order. With all this said, I'm writing to inform you that the current Southbridge sped pack board members have resigned. They will no longer advocate for the children of this district when their parents are not willing to stand behind them and the community can speak so ill of innocent children. Sincerely, Lee and Pate, Priscilla Hoats, and Jessica Robillard.
Thank you. Thank you very much. If I, I don't know, if it's appropriate, maybe I'll say something under member form. Next, regarding the policy subcommittee. Just to let everybody know, the meeting, we will be having a policy subcommittee meeting tomorrow at 6:30 PM in M14. We'll be resuming section, a review of Section B of the manual. This is largely school committee governance issues, and the public is welcome to attend. And I did not put the budget and finance subcommittee on here. I'll make sure I do that for the next meeting, so that if you have a report, we can take that up. At this time, I'm going to change a couple of things on the agenda. Mr. Abrahamson brought to my attention that, or reminded me, that on January 13th, there had been a motion taken by this group, a special order, to place the vote to appoint a finance director right after the school committee reports. So, we're going to take that item out of order, and that was Agenda Item 8A, and we're now on that item. So, I would turn to the superintendent for a recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. After an exhaustive search and process of interviewing candidates, I would like to recommend Erin Osborne as Director of Finance.
Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion on this agenda item? Anybody want to speak? Dr. Page?
Yeah, does that come with the salary recommendation as well, or is that something that's to be negotiated at a later date?
If we end up making a motion, that can be incorporated into the motion.
Okay. So, we're basically just ratifying something that we don't really have the purview to ratify. She can appoint whoever she wants, right?
Right. Our role here is advise and consent. Unless there, unless a candidate in this position is not certified for the position, our role is one of advise and consent.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So, would somebody like to make a motion? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to accept this acting superintendent's recommendation for Erin Osborne to be appointed Director of Finance.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation and appoint Erin Osborne as Director of Finance. The motion was made by Mrs. Quinney, it's been seconded by Mr. Abrahamson. Is there any discussion? My only discussion would be, do we want to amend that motion to say pending successful contract negotiations? That's typically what we add on?
Uh...
So, would somebody like to make that amendment? Thank you, Dr. Page.
I move to amend the language to iterate what you just said.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Dr. Page, seconded by Mr. Abrahamson, just to add the language pending successful contract negotiations. So, this is a vote now on the amendment itself. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Lebo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Oh, yes?
Thank you. The motion carries now. We are voting on the main motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Erin Osborne, Director of Finance, pending successful contract negotiations. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mr. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Oh, yes?
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Osborne. It's been a long road. We thank you for hanging in there with us.
It is what it is.
And so now, your first order of business is a report.
I believe you are all in receipt of budget actual expenses, financial statements for the period ending December 31st, 2014. I believe we do have also the version with the red removed. Is that, did that get you? Okay. I just wanted to make sure. And I, it just, for me, it helps clarify things. If it's easier, it's very easy for me to take that out. That's not a problem. You will notice this covers every single general fund budget line item. I think this is something that's been some back and forth over. This does include every single line item with the roll-up page from previously. It also includes some offsets from other sources. You'll notice circuit breakers on the front, there are some grants that we have pulled money into. So, we've had a couple of things happen since the prior financials we received. First, we took some circuit breaker and moved some salaries over to Title I. The circuit breaker we took over is 2014 circuit breaker. It has to has to be used this year. One of my strategies is to create a cascading system of funding, which means that we take money from the least flexible source available first. So, money that's going to run out at the end of this year, if we don't use it, we're going to use first. So, we moved that over. Any of our 2015 circuit breaker has an additional year on it, so if we don't use it, we get to carry it over. There are a few grants that work similarly, but those tend to be less flexible. So, for example, Title I is a supplement, not supplant. So, typically, you can add staff to reduce class sizes and do things like that, but we can't typically purchase basic curriculum materials, textbooks, and things like that on the Title I grant, for example. It's used typically a lot for summer school programs, after-school programs, things like that. So, a lot of the money we have tied up in that is in salaries. We're looking to pull it off, the same reason we did the 240, pulling salaries off of the 240 grant. In upcoming years- In upcoming years, there will be an effort to try to pull a few salaries off of that Title I grant. It's harder because of the more restrictive nature of the grant, but we do get the benefit of that 9% that they take out from MTRS, which we pay anyhow. So it's really kind of a weird wash. There are a few items on there. We have facilities rentals, school choice-in, preschool tuition. Some of those aren't exact numbers because we're constantly receiving rentals. We're constantly receiving preschool tuition. School choice-in is somewhere we also will put tuitions as we receive them. So Ms. Culligan mentioned that we will be receiving some tuitions in for some SPED programs. Funding will go into that and will be used for typically special ed purposes. One of those could be to offset some of our out-of-district costs to supplement circuit breaker. Those are out of our revolving accounts. Those are some of our most flexible sources of money. So those would sort of be the last resort if we can use those towards the end. So there is a strategy to how we use some of this money. I just wanted to kind of reiterate is why we use one source versus another and why we sometimes wait to use that money. We tend to, we waited up until now to sweep money into circuit breaker because we wanted to see where things are, and we also wanted to decide what sources we wanted to use based on their flexibility. I hope that makes some sense. And that, that's about it. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them whenever.
Any questions? Dr. Page?
Madam Chair, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Through you, Madam Chair, to, to Mr. Osborne. Something just triggered. Your colleague to the right, our student representative, mentioned he's having trouble recruiting students to take advantage of the after-school tutoring program that they're offering. And I'm wondering, is it possible to use Title I funds or something to maybe provide transportation for students who may not take advantage of the program because they can't get home if they stay after school because they missed the bus? I mean, I just, I don't know. I'm just kind of opening this up out there because it kind of just came along. I mean, would that be something we can consider?
We can look at that. Typically, there is a process, a Title I process. I apologize. When, when I arrived last year, the Title I process was done, and the Title I grant was, was only approved in November. Typically, you want it approved at the beginning of the year so you know that all of your salaries and everything's going to be rolled up. We then conducted about seven amendments to that grant during the course of the year. I would very much like the next round of Title I grants when we go out to be a lot more inclusive. So rather than trying to put something together at the last minute to include groups such as student council, if they want to do that, I would love to include them. For example, going into Title III last year and some of the amendments we created on that, I was unaware that there had been a fairly successful tutoring program, summer program at one of the apartment complexes. And I had set everything up at the elementary schools to, to amend the grants and have a summer program for ELL students. And the apartment complex was very saddened to hear that we didn't have something. So outreach to partners is very important. I've written that into the Title III grant this year, so we will have an onsite program for that. And I would absolutely love, and, and it would be great if we could start that process, the Title I process, earlier this year and be more inclusive. As we amend the Title I grant, as we are wont to do, we're able to amend the grant based on what programs we deem necessary during the course of the year. We can change it. It still needs to be a supplement, not supplant, program, but we certainly could, if we looked at that grant and we found that we had transportation available, we could certainly consider adding a transportation component to that. That wouldn't be a problem. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can't. Mr. Boyzrak, sorry.
So, Dr. Page, we have a late bus at 3:30 that picks up students who stay after school.
Okay. Oh, so move point then.
No, but I think your point is that you can maybe use it for some other creative different kinds of things with students.
Well, right. I guess my point was, is, you know, he, he mentioned that he was having, you know, that students aren't really taking advantage, and I, it just occurred to me, maybe that might be one of the reasons, and so I thought, you know, it might be a way to do it.
Yes.
Yep.
This is one of those opportunities to consider how we can use this on something that's supplemental, that we should be doing anyhow. So if we have tutoring programs that require a late bus, and it's something, you know, we think we, we wouldn't be able to afford otherwise, we could use Title I funds for that late bus reasonably. I'm not going to say equivocably, but that does give us some flexibility. It would then mean that maybe we could take a teacher off of Title I and put them on the general fund while we have some funds to actually have a late bus. So yeah, there is some, there is some room to talk about that. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, Mrs. Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mr. Osborne.
Sure.
So now that it's official, are you going to be proactive with reaching out to the town to budget, you know, setting timelines, et cetera, with, with the town?
I, I think we, we have in a lot of ways. We've been sort of enmeshed in some craziness with, with things going on. I think there's, there is absolutely an effort to work with the town. I think we've worked more productively with the town than in the past.
I agree.
You know, I, the way I see it is we are very much a department of the town. We work to, very much to a degree for the town, and there is a, a very large amount of reporting that needs to be done to the town, keeping them abreast of, of things that happen, and working with them to be as effective and efficient as possible. And that includes the budget process. So we, we have been reaching out, Superintendent Stanton and I have been reaching out to the town and talking about what are some of your deadlines and how can we work with those deadlines?
Okay.
And to, you know, we have been putting together, the principals will see some templates tomorrow for the budget process. We've missed a few DLT meetings where I think we hope to be able to talk about those in a little more detail, but we will be talking about those tomorrow, I believe, and how we're going to use those to really start the budget process and engage principals in that.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Levo?
I just have one question. You said, Mr. Osborne, that the Title I money can't be used to purchase curriculum or new curriculum? Is that, I understand.
It cannot.
So what about existing curriculum that we have in the school and, and building upon that, you know, in, in the areas of textbooks and such?
That is, that is seen as, as core to what our general fund is intended to fund. That would not be considered supplemental. It needs to be something above and beyond what our general fund is intended to pay for.
Okay.
With that said, we were approved this year when we wrote the grant. There are some supplemental programs, such as our literacy program, that we have, we have acquired, and we did use some Title I funds for that as a supplemental. There is a supplemental component to that. So there's some room, but you can't buy biology textbooks or algebra textbooks with that because those are considered core to instruction.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, Dr. Page, one last, yeah, okay.
So one of the things that I've seen in the past years ago is included with the financial report is an updated staff listing, which basically includes, you know, all of the personnel in the district and open positions and how they're budgeted and allocated and so forth. And I think that might help us as we prepare to have a look at what kind of resources are allocated throughout the buildings in the district and so forth. So hopefully that would be relatively straightforward.
That is something I am updating.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Just hopefully that'll be relatively straightforward, right? We know who we have.
Yes. Yes. We have, we have a pretty good accounting for who we have. I'm working with the, the payroll, our, the payroll clerk is working on a couple of different projects throughout the course of the year. One of those includes straightening out our categorization system. So we have a whole lot of employees, and we pull a report out of the system. There are categories that have been created, so I can, you, ideally, you can see in a category, you should be able to say, okay, here are all of our teachers. And ideally, I'd like it to be, here are all of our math teachers, here are, in high school math teachers, here are all our middle school. Right now, the categories, there's no rhyme or reason to categories. There are just people in random categories. So that's one of the many projects that, when I'm thinking proactively, position control and the ability to just simply pull a report and be able to say, here are our employees. So as it stands now, it's a little more difficult than just pulling a report, and it's happening as part of the budget process. When I hand out the budget templates to principals, they're going to verify all of their staff for us, and I'm happy to kind of keep you guys abreast of that. That's not a problem.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Just a quick question, Madam Chair. The Budget Finance Subcommittee, is that met yet?
Well, that's, I, that was my error. I didn't put that on here yet.
I understand, but has it, has it met yet?
Has it met yet?
No.
No.
Then these questions will obviously be dealt within depth at the Budget Finance Subcommittee, correct? And then the results of these discussions that we're sort of having here now will be reported to the committee as a whole.
That's ideally what we're hopeful.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
If I'm a response, yeah, I just, I just wanted to make the request now because I think it's something, it's informational to help us prepare for that meeting, so.
Through you, Madam Chair. I wasn't objecting to the, to the discussion. I was just saying that that will be one of the advantages of the Budget Finance Subcommittee.
Makes that more efficient. Yep. Thank you very much for that, Mr. Abrahamson. If there's nothing further, we'll move on to the report of the Superintendent. Ms. Stanton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've had a busy week since February 3rd, despite the snow. We met with our DSAC Regional Coordinator, Joe Connor, today to discuss DESI supports available to our schools. Examples of the supports include DSAC personnel assisting in our data collection and analysis, the development and refinement of our district learning walks, and principal calibration of observations. Those are all in alignment with our AIP and several of the goals that we are working toward improving on the quarterly report that we just recently received. We've had several organizational meetings in preparation for a large meeting on Friday of all of our elementary and secondary education partners. That includes our plan manager, our plan monitor, and also all of our providers like Focus on Results, and our own district leadership team and school-based instructional leadership teams. That meeting is to align all of our efforts and also to take a look at our AIP and make sure that our AIP is not simply a compliance exercise, but one that actually does result in our goals of improved student achievement for all of our students, particularly our subgroup populations. Today, it was very nice to see at central office, our ILT teams from the schools came and participated in training with Focus on Results. The content included reading articles about school innovation and reviewing alignment of best practices with our targeted PD. One of the goals of Focus on Results is to make sure that teachers lead the work in terms of professional development, that they are looking at data to make those decisions, particularly with professional development. Given the weather, I did want to address the committee and the public about, about the weather. I think my approval ratings are pretty high with students right now, given the number of snow days that we've had, but there are some people out there that are concerned, particularly my athletic director has shared through her principal that, that we have some concerns out there. But I did want to first of all say thank you to our facilities and our custodial staff. I cannot tell you how many long hours they have put in to make sure that our facilities are safe and open for students. We did have situations where we were canceling, not because our buildings couldn't be open, but because the hard work of DPW, they just couldn't keep up with streets and sidewalks. So again, I want to say thank you to the custodians and the maintenance staff for all of their hard work. I would also like to say thank you to the families and the community for their flexibility and patience during this extraordinary weather we are experiencing. We do not consider closing or delaying schools without the full understanding of the impact such decisions have for our families. Ultimately, the decision to close or delay school is the decision of the Superintendent. However, this decision is made with input from the Supervisor of Maintenance and the Director of Operations, who are in contact with the DPW, fire and police, and AA Transportation. The communication within these departments works together to recommend actions in light of the weather forecast, road and sidewalk conditions, and safety of school grounds. Again, I can't thank enough the communication that happened over the past half of a month, and we still have quite a bit of winter left, between the town departments and our school department regarding the ability of schools to open during this very difficult time. This is not a decision, closing schools or delaying schools, that we take lightly, but one that is made with the realization that the safety of our students and staff absolutely come above all else. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't anticipate this for the agenda, so I, maybe we need to discuss this more fully, but in general, are superintendents discussing plans to make up? I have personally had people contact me, everything from, you know, taking away a vacation to adding on 45 minutes to every school day, as I guess was done in Worcester a few years ago. So I don't know if that's something that maybe you can plan on discussing at the next meeting, or?
Sure.
We can add that to the agenda then?
I'd like to ride out my approval ratings for a little while longer before we discuss how we're going to get that time back. That's not going to be popular, but yes, there are ways to encumber those days back. And there are requirements under the law for how many days we have to be in attendance.
Thank you. Yep.
The Commissioner of Education has posted on the website a formula for making up of these school days. So you might want to just have a look at that.
I was not aware of that. Thank you. Well, it's not unique to us. I think they said winter, Worcester now is the snowiest city in America of right now, so they're, they're going to be going to school for a long time. And the mayor of Boston was on TV saying that his school year is supposed to end the 19th of June, which is now the 30th of June, unless they take some steps, so. Mr. Boyzrak got a kick out of that. So at the next meeting, we can discuss that further. And now, before we get to school committee actions, it is 9 o'clock. We are 90 minutes into our meeting, and so this is the time we decide whether we want to continue or not.
Madam Chair, I move that we continue this meeting until its conclusion. I don't think we need to take the rest of the night for it, and that will, but we did postpone last time. There are some urgent things that need to be done, and we need to continue, in my view, and I move that we do.
Second. Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Abrahamson and a second by Ms. Congdon to continue. Is there any discussion? Dr. Page?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one point, I don't know that I'd want to make it open-ended until conclusion. I'd say maybe extend for 30 minutes, so I would like to entertain an amendment to that motion to extend for, for 30 minutes.
And now, just to clarify, is that with executive session or without?
Without.
Okay. 30 minutes without executive session. So we have a, Dr. Page is proposing an amendment. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Mr. Levo. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'll accept the amendment if we are able to vote after 30 minutes to continue this meeting.
Okay. Go ahead. Jill, Mrs. Congdon?
I'll accept the amendment if we are able to vote after 30 minutes to continue this meeting if necessary.
Thank you. So we have a motion to continue the meeting for another 30 minutes with Mr. Abrahamson's stipulation. Are we in agreement?
Yes.
Okay. What?
We're going to do a roll call on the amendment.
Yes. We have a roll call on the amendment, on Mr., Dr. Page's amendment. Thank you. Mrs. Donovan?
No. No.
Mrs. Quinney?
No.
Mr. Abrahamson?
We shall leave over.
Amendment.
Mine.
The amendment, to limit to 30 minutes.
No.
Mrs. Congdon?
No.
Mr. Levo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
No.
We have five no's and two yes. That was on the amendment. So now, we're back to the main motion. The amendment's failed, so we're back to the main motion to continue the meeting to its conclusion. Can I have a roll call on that, please? Mrs. Quinney?[1765.73] Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
No.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
We have, oh, Mrs. Donovan, did I?
Yes.
Okay, we have six yeses and one no. Okay. And that just killed a few minutes off the clock, so let's move on. So, now, under School Committee Actions, Agenda Item 8B was a vote to appoint an interim Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. I, when I prepared this agenda in concert with the Superintendent and the Vice Chair, I was optimistic that we would have information. The School Committee, in fact, did not receive information prior to the meeting, so we just want to be, again, deliberate, and we're just going to move that to the next meeting. Yes.
What information were you looking for?
The information as far as the recommendation and the, the background.
Is the Superintendent prepared to make that recommendation and describe the background to that?
I would ask the Superintendent.
Okay. Superintendent?
Yes, I would be prepared.
Then, Madam Chair, I, I see no reason to move it, and, and move that we continue the agenda as printed.
Okay. So, we have, Mr. Abrahamson's making a motion to proceed with the vote to appoint an interim Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. Is there a second to that? Is there a second? Seeing none, that motion fails, Mr. Abrahamson. So, we'll just move that to February 24th, to the next meeting. So, next, we have the vote to-
Madam Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Could we, I propose a special order to take up that domination by the Superintendent for the next meeting, to appear directly following Subcommittee reports.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second to that request? Seconded by Mrs. Quinney. Is there any discussion placing this as a special order? Seeing none, can I have a roll call on that, please? Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
All yeses? Thank you. The motion carries. So, now, we'll move to 8C, which is a vote to approve the Eastford Road School's School Improvement Plan for the 2014-2015 school year. Before we get into that, I don't know if you just want to explain the difference between the district improvement plan and the school improvement plan?
Sure. The district improvement plan does, really is driven by the AIP, as such, so are the school improvement plans, but school improvement plans do include input from the school councils, and they should be in alignment and, in fact, are in alignment with the AIP. School ILTs do prepare those with their principals and their leadership teams, and so we are very pleased to have in front of you those school improvement plans for your approval.
Thank you. So, we're up to the Eastford Road School Improvement Plan for the 2014-2015 school year.
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Abraham makes the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Olivo. Is there any discussion on the Eastford Road School Improvement Plan? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess this is for all of the school improvement plans. My question was just, the goals are very broad goals with not very clear evaluation pieces in place. Is there a reason that they're not SMART goals? Is that broad for a reason, and if so, could you explain that, please?
Sure. I think the AIP is where you're going to find the SMART goals and the measurable objectives, and school improvement man, plans really are about guiding, providing information to the community about general, in general more, in general, the goals of the school, so they wouldn't necessarily be SMART goals.
So, given that, how will we be able to assess progress in achieving those goals as outlined in the school improvement plans?
I would say you would refer to your AIP. The AIP is where measurable benchmark objectives and activities occur.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. More of a general question as well. Do these school improvement plans get tweaked as they go? Our ARP obviously is a work in progress, and I know I've read through all of them, and they all, all these teams and principals and teachers and parents have done a great job putting these documents together, no doubt, but I know there's certain strategies and timelines of when things are set, and then there's like a date complete or whether it's ongoing, so does that make each one of these improvement plans a work in progress? As the school year progresses, certain things can get checked off the list, so to speak.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
Anything else on Eastford Road School? So, we have, I might just say that once these improvement plans are, once they're approved by the School Committee, they can then, and will be posted to the district website, so the general public has an opportunity to view them. So, we're on the vote to approve the Eastford Road School Improvement Plan for the 2014-2015 school year. Roll call, please. Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
All yeses? Thank you. Next on the agenda is a vote to approve the Charlton Street School's School Improvement Plan for the 2014-2015 school year.
So moved.
Mr. Abrahamson makes the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Quinney. Is there any discussion on the Charlton Street School's School Improvement Plan? Seeing none, can I have a roll call, please? Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
All yeses? Thank you. A vote to approve the West Street School's School Improvement Plan for the 2014-2015 school year.
So moved.
Mr. Abrahamson makes the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Quinney. Is there any discussion on the West Street School's School Improvement Plan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This isn't necessarily about the West Street School's School Improvement Plan, but just about moving forward the-
2014-2015 is what we're approving now. My expectation is that in the spring, we'll be looking at the 2015-2016 school improvement plans. Is that correct?
They would be revised, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could I have a roll call on the vote to approve the West Street School's School Improvement Plan for the 2014-2015 school year? Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
All yeses? Thank you. And finally, a vote to approve the Southbridge Middle High School's School Improvement Plan for the 2014-2015 school year.
So moved.
Ooh, it's a tie. I'm going to give it to Mr. Olivo. Mr. Olivo makes the motion. Mr. Abrahamson seconds the motion. Is there any discussion on the Southbridge Middle High School Improvement Plan? Seeing none, could I have a roll call, please? Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
All yeses? Thank you. We move now to Agenda Item Number Nine. This is unfinished business. This is a Superintendent of Schools' update to include possible votes related to proceeding with a search. I just want to say, as everybody is aware, we appointed Superintendent Stanton, Cheryl Stanton, Acting Superintendent, on January 7th, and following that, we extended that term through June 30th of 2015, through the end of the school year, in an effort to provide stability for the district. And this is an opportunity for School Committee members to have a discussion that we intended to have a couple of weeks ago, but were delayed in having this discussion. So, I would open the floor to anybody who would like to speak to this issue. Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I had stated at our meeting with Town Council, I think in the process of moving forward, that it's incumbent upon us to get some feedback from teachers and people who are in the building, who are greatly impacted by the Superintendent and her work, and I would request that we put together some sort of a survey in order to see where, get some teacher feedback regarding where we're at, where they'd like to see the district head, and how they would like to see that process unfold. I understand fully that it's our decision as to how to proceed, but I think people have been in the district for a long time and experienced a lot of transition and have a unique perspective that those of us who are very new sitting up here don't have, and I think that before we make any lasting decisions for the district and the people that are going to be mostly affected, our students and obviously teachers, that I think we need to get some feedback from them and let their voices be heard as part of this process. So, I think I would like to see us do some form of a online survey that can be anonymous to just get that feedback and allow teachers the opportunity to have their voices heard and to be respectful of that input. That's all I have to say on that. I talked to Julie. It's not that hard to do an online survey.
Thank you.
I was coached today.
Dr. Page?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think that we, we really need to do a Superintendent's search for, for many reasons. Basically, I think that, as my colleague just said, we're not unilaterally qualified, I don't think, to be making unilateral decisions in, in terms of this. I would like to see a lot of input onto or from other representatives of the community, the school community, and the community at large have an opportunity to really weigh in on the selection of the candidate that is proposed to us. And I think that's something that we're elected to do. It's standard academic process. These are not, this is, the Superintendent's job is the chief executive of the district, and I firmly believe that we owe it to the process to conduct a search. And so, I, I think that if the current Acting Superintendent should apply for, for that, and, and I think that having gone through a process of search and interview and, and everything, if that ends up being the selection and rises to up, that will add so much more credibility to that position moving forward. And I think that most, strongly, I believe that we really need to get the input of the broader community on selection of a Superintendent candidate. Like, like I mentioned to several emails to some of my colleagues up here, is that that tenure will probably outlive, depending on our ability to be reelected or desire to be reelected, that tenure of an appointment that we make as a body will outlive us. And so, there's a much, much broader group of people that, that I think deserve to weigh in on that process in, in the selection of the candidate, and that, that's my opinion on the matter. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Madam Chair, thank you. It's been just a few days since the last joint meeting of the Town Council and the School Committee, when a pledge was made to seek greater cooperation between the two. We now know, Madam Chair, that cooperation to the leaders of the Town Council means agreeing with them. Disagreeing with them means being uncooperative and negative. I believe, Madam Chair, that not challenging the recent actions of the Town Council Chair, Mr. Moriarty, and Vice Chair, Mr. Crossco, would be negligent, so I want to speak to that. I'm referring to the Council's decision to take their views to the press and social media in an attempt to coerce this committee into doing things their way. Now, Madam Chair, we've been down this road before, but not with such high-ranking officials as the Chair and Vice Chair of the Southbridge Town Council. Nevertheless, Madam Chair, the February 8th, 2015 article in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette reveals some of the same hubris and ignorance as other articles and social networking comments that have come previously. Hubris, Madam Chair, in thinking that one has all the answers, and ignorance, Madam Chair, in not knowing what one doesn't know. It's not a good combination. The Council's intent, Madam Chair, is to use the court of public opinion and to assert politics into this committee's choice of the next Superintendent of Schools. They're calling for an open search that would, quote, "enhance the school board's credibility", unquote. Ironically, Madam Chair, the rest of the article diminishes their own credibility and greatly compromises the future, not only of our school system, but of the entire town of Southbridge. Hubris and ignorance, Madam Chair. Now, Madam Chair, I could go on to cite specifics in the article, such as the politically-infused flawed search that brought arguably the most flawed individual to this community as Superintendent of Schools. Or, Madam Chair, I could point out that a search was conducted for an interim Superintendent when Mr. Nemberko was hired. He was one of, I believe, though I was not at the committee at the time, three candidates, two of which dropped out. That's not unlike the last Town Manager's search, when the one remaining candidate was appointed by default because all others had been driven away. Incidentally, it was that Town Manager who stated that the new middle high school would cost the taxpayers little to nothing because the difference would be made up by the sale of town-owned buildings. I wonder how that's going. You know, Madam Chair, just as a quick aside, there were two major articles within two days written by the same TNG reporter. The other was headlined, "Cassello Wants to Expand Landfill Borders: Six Additional Acres Are Proposed in Southbridge, Five in Charlton", and I wondered what our Council leaders had to say about that. Well, don't look it up. They apparently had nothing to say. Madam Chair, that article correctly states that the, that major headaches in our town, in addition to the landfill, are the high rate of asthma, incidence of domestic abuse, and drug abuse. Madam Chair, tomorrow marks the 21st anniversary of what may be popularly called the Environmental Justice Act, which was passed to protect low-income communities and communities with a high minority population from being a dumping ground for things that are injurious to the surrounding population. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has an office devoted to environmental justice that could empower the citizens of Southbridge. Richer, less racially diverse towns can say, "Not in my backyard", but trashing is welcome in Southbridge, apparently be it towards the school system or the entire town. Now, Madam Chair, this is another article, which I must refer to, which was authored by a former employee of this school district and appeared in the February 6th, 2015 edition of the Southbridge Evening News. It was headlined, "The Students Deserve Better". In it, the writer calls on School Commissioner Mitchell Chester and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to assume control of the Southbridge Public Schools. "No more district reviews, no more accelerated improvement plans", the former employee declares, as if Mitchell Chester is a wizard and has a magic wand and can say abracadabra, and all is well with the Southbridge Public Schools. Well, Madam Chair, incidentally, I would point out, and I guess it's my, for my years as an English teacher, that, to the writer, that when one cites something from an article, the word "cite" is spelled with a C, and when something is made worse, it's not exasperated, it's exacerbated. The letter writer does bring up a good point, however, that must be addressed, and that is a school district in receivership. That is, when the state takes control of the school system by declaring us a chronically underperforming district, level five. What does that mean? The state appoints a person to take charge of the school district. This person has extraordinary powers and acts as both the Superintendent and the School Committee. Among other things, this person has the power to fire anyone and everyone in the school system and force them to reapply for their jobs. It supersedes collective bargaining. There won't be a need for budget talks between the school and the town. The town will be told what they'll pay, and the cuts will be made to other departments, perhaps through layoffs or diminished services. If there is a persistent deficiency with respect to this municipality, Southbridge, providing adequately for the schools, the Commissioner of Revenue, and I quote, "shall not approve the tax rate of the municipality for the fiscal year until the deficiency is alleviated." People can read that for themselves by referring to Mass. General Law's Chapter 69, Section 1K. Madam Chair, as you know, this school district does face some real challenges. Five of the nine councilors- Five of the nine counselors, including - and that's a majority, by the way - including Mr. Moriarty and Mr. Carrasco, have, I believe, recklessly signed a pledge to cut everything in the budget by 1%. In addition, we're uncertain as to the budget items that will be cut in education by the governor. In September, Madam Chair, as you know, the Southbridge schools are slated for a comprehensive district review that is a prelude to a level determination. The district performance level could go up or down, depending on what the comprehensive district review team observes and reports. Madam Chair, despite all the obstacles, I believe at this time, we truly have a shot at exiting Level 4 in the positive direction by staying the course. The negativity expressed in the media by Mr. Moriarty and Mr. Carrasco have undermined our chances and made the process more difficult. But, Madam Chair, as you stated, the school committee intends to proceed deliberately and will not be rushed into making any decision merely for the sake of making one. That's the right course, Madam Chair, and I thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak to this agenda item? Mr. Olivo?
Madam Chair, I would just like to say that politics, social media, everything aside, it is imperative that we, as a school committee, we as a community, we as a faculty in the school district, remember the reason that we are here, and that reason is the children of this schools. We have been blamed for far too long - I say "we" because I sit on this school committee and the school committees in the past - for the decisions that have been made of the superintendent. So I welcome a search, and I welcome those members who have spoke up negatively to come out and partake in this search, so that the blame can lie elsewhere, so that they can see the process, so that they know that this is not an easy work. It is a hard work. But the main point and the main focus should be our children. I support a search, and I welcome the acting superintendent to apply for this position. She, for one, knows where we're at, and it's a good thing to know. However, I think that, as Ms. Quinney stated, the faculty, the community, everybody needs to have a say-so in moving forward, and for that, I welcome a search.
Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that I am in full favor of implementing a search for our district's next leader. I've learned from my previous decision that the entire community should have a say in finding the next leader for our school district. I feel that this process can't be rushed. I'm hoping that we can find the best candidate that fits the needs of our population. Our best candidate might also be here. But the needs of our population and serve the children of our community. Therefore, I'm recommending that we undertake a search, and at this time, I would move to authorize the chair to request proposals from search firms.
Thank you. We certainly - somebody certainly can second, and we'll proceed as long - I just want to give everybody a chance to just speak first. So I don't know if you want to temporarily withdraw that?
I'll hold.
Thank you.
I'll withdraw for now.
Thank you. Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I have the unique position of having done both. Sat on the search committee for a superintendent three years ago. Disastrous. We'll just leave it at that. So I've done that, participated in that. Good intentions, got politically interrupted, and then the whole thing fell apart. So that was my first experience with a superintendent search. The second part of my experience, just being on this board, was being - I don't want to say victim, but just being in the experience of having to fill vacancies on the spot. And without having to go into all different details, it's not as easy as one would think of having to find replacements when people leave and filling positions with interims and things like that. I always try to do the very best that I can, given the information that I am given at a certain point in time that I am at. And so the previous two superintendents that we've had were people that, yes, I voted to put in. There was no search done for either one of them. It was information that I was given at the time relative to their experience and recommendations of prior superintendents, and I voted yes. Those decisions, also at this point, had not turned out the best for the district. So I can see both sides. However, my decision at this point is to also welcome a search. I think more than anything else, it would provide legitimacy to the position. I think that if a search is done right, and it's done properly, and people feel that they have the ability to participate and engage in every way possible, then everybody will realize or come to the conclusion, hopefully, that the person chosen is, in fact, the best person for that position, deserves that position, is and is capable of running this school district in the way that it needs to be run. And for that particular person, whether it's somebody from within or not, I think it's very important that that person step into the place that we are at now with a legitimate - I'm going to say "power," but I don't mean that in a negative way - but needs to be legitimate, and it needs to know that, has the respect and the endorsement of a school committee, as well as district leadership teams, building principals, community teachers, as Mrs. Quinney said, vital, vital participants in this. Ultimately, the kids, you know, they'll hear about it, they'll see, maybe they'll watch the interviews on TV. They can even engage themselves and realize that ultimately, like Mr. Olivo said, we are doing this for them. So at this point, if Mrs. Congdon were to move forward with her motion, I would fully support that. Just knowing what I know, the firms would come and give presentations, and then if we were to move forward from there, then we would have more of an active process of timelines and how the process would unfold. But I think at this point, in light of the integrity of the process and the legitimacy of the position, I would support an open search. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Quinney? Did you want to speak, or - no?
I'm good.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just wanted to give everybody a chance to speak first. Regarding a search, I too support a search. I always have. I'm not just saying that because we've been pressured into doing this. I think it is the right thing to do. I think last year's circumstances were very unique. I thought we articulated those at the time. We thought we had a good plan in place. We had a very, very sudden decision of Mr. Nemberko due to his health not to be able to return to the district. I personally feel like that perhaps, and this is me personally, my own vote, was a rush because there was a panic that there were four new principals coming on board, that we wanted some sort of stability for the district. And thank goodness, we had the foresight to make it a one-year contract. I mean, I think people kind of forget that, so that in the event that it was kind of - if it didn't work out, our liability or exposure would be limited in that regard. And it was, in a sense, an interview. Things didn't work out for that, and that's okay. You know, sometimes you have to take bold action, and sometimes that action pays off and you look like a hero, and when that action doesn't pay off, you know, you don't. And so I just wanted to say that I would support a search. Obviously, I've looked into this. I haven't contacted any search companies. I would need authorization from the school committee, and we've not discussed this as a group. I haven't even discussed this with some of the members up here prior, because as a deliberative body, we have to have this discussion up on the dais, and I'm really thankful that we're having such a good discussion this evening. But certainly, I've looked at timelines and process and all of that. So, that being said, I do absolutely support going forward with a search for the reasons that, first of all, again, to be deliberate, to - again, as Mrs. Donovan said, I think that there's a real lack of trust in this community in general, and I would like that the person that's selected, be internal, be external, be able to be supported by a large enough number of people so that the community would really embrace this individual and embrace what we're trying to do and embrace the change. And that's my opinion. So, Mr. Abrahamson?
Madam Chair, I won't prolong this, and I understand the majority feeling. I would just add that the town council could show its spirit of cooperation by providing the money for this search.
Thank you. That's something to discuss once the presentations come, but thank you. Great point. I'll turn to Mrs. Congdon now. There's no other discussion?
Thank you. I move to authorize the chair to request proposals from search firms.
Search firms?
Second.
Thank you. So we now have a motion from Mrs. Congdon, which has been seconded by Dr. Page, authorizing the chair to contact search firms for requests for proposals. Did I state that correctly? Is there any discussion, any further discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
All yes?
Thank you. I'll get to work, and I will have a report for our next meeting, and hopefully some information for us to share. Under New Business, the next regular school committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 24th, at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers. We move now to member forum. Is there - any member would like to speak to - nope. Oh, Dr. Page? Nope. Oh, Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a couple of quick thank-yous. Ms. Stanton had mentioned it, and I had it on my list, to really thank our facilities and maintenance and custodial staffs in light of all this. They truly are unsung heroes this past couple of weeks, so hats off to them and many thanks to them. And I wanted to also congratulate Mr. Osborne for becoming our new finance director, and I welcome you. I also had information - I had to mention about these in a little while, but I have new information, so I wanted to let the public know, especially if you have little kids. On Saturday, February 21st, there's going to be a puppet show at the Quinnabog Valley Art Center. This is something that they do on a regular basis. It's Lionheart Puppet Company, and they're producing The Little Red Hen. The Little Red Hen has so much to do, so little time to bake some cookies for the bake sale, so she's looking for help from her friends to get it done, so that's really the theme of the show. So the art center is at 111 Main Street. Again, the puppet show is Saturday, February 21st, at 11:00 a.m. It is being sponsored by United Lens. Adults are $5, and if children are accompanied by an adult, the children get in for free. So if you have little kids, that's the Saturday, you know, coming off the end of our February break. So if you have little kids, that might be a fun thing to do. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody - Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One thing that I know is going on at Eastford Road this Thursday, weather permitting, round two - trying again - Willy Wonka will be at 5:30 to about 7:30 at Eastford Road School. Your student should have brought home a piece of paper that just asks about how many people will be attending. So if you have that, I would highly recommend you do that. It should be a good time, and, yes, probably -
They'll have track?
I think there might be some Wonka snacks in the mix there. I'm guessing. So hope for good weather, and I would encourage you all, parents of Eastford Road students, and then their siblings are also welcome to come as well. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Mr. Olivo?
I would just like to add one thing. The PTA is sponsoring or the - a fundraiser for the Worcester Sharks game, and in which I believe it's the West Street Chorus that will be performing there. They will be performing there. So those parents should have gotten the flyers. I do believe that it is on the 21st. I might be wrong, but I think it is the 21st of February. So, you know, please support our school, our students, and our PTA as well.
Thank you very much. Next is executive session. There will be an executive session tonight pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's bargaining position or litigation position, and the chair so declares, I so declare, a potential litigation is that first reason. And second is pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel to include the acting superintendent contract, the acting finance director contract, the director of finance contract, and the supervisor of maintenance and facilities contract.
Don't move. Second.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Abrahamson. It's been seconded by Dr. Page. Could I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
All yes?
The committee will reconvene in open session for the purpose of adjournment only. Thank you.